I'm recording.
I am bringing this March twentieth Town Council Budget Workshop Meeting to order. And I will take a roll call. Councillor Higgins.
President.
Councillor Pelletier. It's not in alphabetical order. Councillor Pelletier. If we can get his audio. You're muted.
Okay, I'm here.
Very good. Councillor Mackin.
Here.
Councillor McGowan.
Here.
Councillor Jemay.
Yeah.
Councillor Braggden.
Present.
And Chair Dan for the present. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So I will turn the meeting over to the manager as we go through our workshop. Just reminding, this is a workshop, so there's no public comment. Hoping to hear some comments from the councillors and questions for the manager as you go through.
Fantastic.
Thank you all for joining me. What we start to go over tonight is the culmination of three plus months of work. And the beginning of the process to adopt our fiscal year twenty-six municipal budget. So this evening, I'm going to just jump right into sharing a screen here. And this evening, we will be reviewing the waste, the total wastewater budget, both expense and revenue. And that is a pretty simple budget and outside of these municipal tax rate, enterprise account. So we will step in on that very shortly and go through that workshop and then we will transition into the regularly municipal budget. And I'll do an overview and then we will go over this evening departments will be general government assessing municipal building audit, legal expenses, administration, planning code and development, economic development, community initiative director. And then the entirety of the public works department. Admin garage, building construction, transit site and cemetery. I do have some packets here for the public that contain printouts of the entirety of the budget packet in its draft form right now. I ask out of courtesy that at the end of the meeting, if you would drop those in the box labeled budget drop box in the back of the room. The, really the reason there is that it could become a nuisance to have outdated draft forms of the budget circling around in the public. So I would ask that those get returned at the end and then we'll be making updates throughout the process and new drafts will be each week. So that's what I would request. And before I jump into the wastewater budget, does anybody have any questions about the process? Like you. The we will go directly to the wastewater budgets. Beginning with wastewater administration. The real noticeable changes here are an increase to the line for the admin cost, that is the funds that the wastewater enterprise account pays to our general fund to offset the town clerks department administrative services that they do. So with all, you know, everything increases. Payrolls, that sort of stuff, amount of time taken to address that. We feel that's a fair number there. And then we are expecting to cut that legal budget in half. Feel very confident. So the total difference in there for the wastewater. With those two things mentioned is six thousand nine hundred dollars of increase. The total department budget is one hundred fifteen thousand three hundred dollars. No question on that. I see. Page two wastewater protection. This is our insurance for wastewater operation and these are the rates. This year we have an increase of two thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars there. Total department budget thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars. Questions?
None.
Moving on. Thank you for all this wastewater operations. There are some increases here almost entirely due to payroll costs and general costing living increases year over year. They have they have one they have the administrator, they have the superintendent, they have one union employee and one salary working underneath that department. So those two are salaried employee is that the regular two percent increase that is throughout most of our municipal budget. The union contract includes a three percent increase this year. That's reflective of those items. Total increase seventeen thousand seventeen dollars. Home department budget four hundred nineteen thousand one dollars.
We have a question, Councillor Jemay.
Just to clarify one, because I was going to ask it anyway. Thank you, Miss Manager. So you're saying across the board, just so I don't ask it again, it's generally a two percent increase unless they're in a union, then it's three percent increase.
Of the cost of women. There are in the, in the general fund expense budget, there are six positions that are, have additional increases on that and we'll talk about, we'll talk about.
Thank you.
Oh, there.
You just finished up page four.
All right. And I think I'm still screen sharing. Louis and mine, can you see that budget? Louis?
He's on mute.
There we go. Yes, you can see it.
Oh, excellent. Fantastic. Um, hi, so onward. Page five wastewater pump stations. The main difference here is reflective of you know, three-year trend in the electricity cost. That itself was somebody's in the waiting room. That is seventy thousand four hundred forty dollar increase that we expect for the electricity cost for the pump stations. The overall increase for that apartment is eight thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Total department budget ninety-three thousand forty dollars. No?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Page six wastewater collection. This you'll see. There's one update I would like to make to this page. Evening. That will make a positive impact on the other side of this budget. So right now you'll see line zero six one one flusher truck. That is proposed right here as a fifty thousand dollar budget line with showing a fourteen thousand dollar increase. What we, what we are planning to do is increase that to sixty thousand. Making that twenty-four thousand dollar increase. This line is what pays for the operation of the flusher truck in the public works department. So overall, and when we get into the general fund budget, we have a critical need to increase the staffing for the public works crew to make sure that that truck is run regularly and that the entire super system is flushed annually. It's a, it's a dire need to keep with the standards of the DEP. We've found the last few years that the clogs and backups are becoming more and more they're happening more often than than ever. So and it's, and it's due to the decrease in public work staffing over the years and ideally we could use two additional crew members, but you know, this is what we could squeeze out of that, out of this year's budget. And, you know, speaking with public works director, if we have one additional person and the you know, the current crew with job duties plus the part-time help in the summer, he can dedicate two people to that truck to flush the entire super system over the summer. That will have a huge impact. Operation of the system and our obligation to meet the EP. So that is a cost that can safely be absorbed. I would plan to make that difference between, or make that adjustment between now and special. And I'll have some related good news to that on getting into the general one. The total increase would now be twenty-two thousand five hundred. The total department budget would be sixty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Does anybody have any question?
Seeing none.
Wastewater debt service. These are the bond payments for sewer projects that have been going on quite some time here in town. That's our payment, that's what we owe. It's two hundred fourteen thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. Anyways.
Can you see Councillor Pelletier if he does have a question or he's just gonna have to speak up?
No, I can't.
I couldn't turn my phone.
If Louis, if you want to jump in with a question, just unmute yourself and start talking, please.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Hey Jake, we've got wastewater capital improvement. We have no intentions of capital improvement within the wastewater budget this year. Speaking, okay, so the total department budget for wastewater expense overall, once that adjustment is made, will be nine hundred forty-six thousand one hundred ninety dollars. You know, wastewater. I'll, I'll get to that after we do.
Reporting in progress.
Revenue budget here. Any questions on that? Total. So we're going to go to wastewater revenue. Wastewater administration. You know, we're looking at the five hundred dollar increase in revenue there that is a total of one million eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars. And then within these pump stations revenue. You know, we're looking at twenty-five hundred dollars there for a total wastewater revenue budget of one million eighty-nine thousand. Any questions on the overall wastewater budget?
Seeing none.
So before I move to the general fund, just want to make this point. Due to all of those bonds that have been taken out over the years and the cost to operate that plant. We're at a point now where the net revenues over at that for wastewater are sitting at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a really, that's cutting it close. And that doesn't take into account that the, the bond that was made within the last two years for the main pump station upgrade that's happening now, we don't start paying on that until next year. It's not reflected in the we, you know, one of the lines within the expense budget, we plan to have a survey done on the finances and the services and fee structure. Find out if, if there's anything we should change over the next year. You know, with the, with the structure. You know, that sort of thing. So we, you notice we didn't do any capital improvement there. That's not to say there's no capital improvement to be done. However, with the wastewater department, we feel very strongly that we need to kind of pause and breathe and zoom out and, and kind of get a more solid plan by ten years of, of where the finances may be and what projects need to be considered in, in their, you know, order of. So just something to keep in the back of your mind as we go through this next year, we'll talk. Everybody good?
Pretty good. Councillor Pelletier good?
A lot.
Okay, he watched him. Nice.
So I'm gonna do a bit of an overview before we jump into the budget itself. With with our general fund municipal budget, this was a year where we we had a lot. We had a tremendous amount to consider. You know, increases out of our control. And, you know, the need for, you know, new staff and addressing, you know, real issue. So this was the year we stopped and went through the entire budget with the finest tooth to comb you could find. You know, you'll find that we, we, we looked at the three-year trends and, and even if a certain line was, you know, underspent regularly by hundred dollars, three years in a row, we nixed a hundred dollars. You know, we, we really had to scale things back to make room for the, the new increases that were you know, out of our control. There are about eighty-seven lines out of eighty-seven out of five hundred or so budget lines that were decreased. And that's that's pretty, that's a pretty big. You know, we had great workers comp rates going into this budget. We've ended up being able to save quite a bit of money there. But on the other side of that, you know, health insurance has increased. The hydrant level through main water is going up thirty thousand dollars this year. So, you know, from what was it thirty? Thirty-nine thousand dollars a month or so, it's now going to be forty-three thousand dollars a month for access to the hydrant. You know, the total budget there is over half a million dollars now and increased dramatically over the past three years. The county tax is up another fifty-five thousand, forty-five thousand this year. That nearly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars increase there three years. You know, our revenues have taken some hit in various places, so we've had to really look at those with, with additional concern and be creative with how we manage our expectations. You know, and, and, and even something like the, the transfer site wastewater, the transfer site waste disposal fees, the, the, the cost to have that stuff processed and taken care of or in the landfill cost, those have all jumped drastically very recently. So we have to make that. So all that being said, with additional points like the union contracts, pay scale is up three percent, non-union. You know, we, I've made a commitment last year to dial that back, that that two percent, all that six positions that you know, I know that the conversation last year was, was sensitive. But, you know, after some long discussions with several people, you know, we came to the agreement that you know, these were fair and, and value. Payroll rates for them. So there's six. You know, they're more than two percent, but they have a minor impact on the overall budget. You'll notice as we go through that all of the phone lines and internet lines have been zeroed out. Those have all been combined into the administrative department. And that is because the new service that'll begin over the summer with spectrum will all be on one build. Be on one, you know, phone network. So they'll all be connected together, far less cumbersome than on internet will be. You know, I won't be using cell phone to do the internet speaking anymore.
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, can I just, are you referring, are you looking at a sheet of paper that we have? Are you, are you just doing it over? Okay. So there's nothing that could be put up on the, up on for those at home. Okay, got it. Just talking. Thank you. Thank you.
So let's go to the bottom line, right? The expenses in this budget are a little over eight million dollars. That is an increase of one hundred thirty-five thousand over fiscal year twenty-five. Actually, I could share a different document.
Here we go.
So this is the budget summary that is within everyone's package. It gives the department totals for expense and revenue FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and then the increase or decrease. All of my last column is the impact on patients. The FY twenty-six expenses are roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over FY twenty-five. In this draft, the revenues are about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above what they were in FY twenty-five. Once we make that change we discussed earlier, the increase you see in this box at the bottom, it says FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six difference. That is concerning the the amount to be raised in taxes. In this draft, it is an increase of six thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars, which is remarkable considering all that we had to jam in there. But once that, once that adjustment in wastewater and the public works is made, that will now be a decrease of three thousand one hundred six nine.
Excuse me, Peter?
Go ahead.
The statement that you made about the revenue being a hundred and fifty thousand more, that's only because we're doing a fund transfer, isn't it?
That's correct.
So we'd be like three fifty less there if we didn't do that.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what we're looking, that's, that's common that we that revenues from or, or use assigned fund balance funds to increase the revenues to help offset the impact based on it's one of the most important roles of that funding. So I, I just want to say before we, you know, again, before we dive in, I'm incredibly proud of our team and the work that went into this budget. It's been a very long and grueling process. You know, especially on our, our dear friend Bev, the treasurer here, many a long hard days and many a long hard nights. So I'm, I'm just incredibly grateful to have this team to work with and I'm excited to present this budget to you. So let's move to general fund expense. And we are going to start with the general government. The general government. You know, changes here are solely based on employment contracts or the minimum cost of living increase. The total impact on the department is an increase of twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars with total department budget of four hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven. Yes, Peter?
Go ahead, Councillor Higgins.
I want to thank the manager for
I want to thank the manager for pulling back in that fifty-four hundred dollars. Was able to be saved.
Oh, no, I haven't yet. No, uh, that's the difference in the last call. So you'll see that. If you look at the second column from the end, it is still at the normal. Uh, ninety-six hundred. And I think the difference would be. Forty.
Council McGowan, we have questions.
Hold on, I think Bob's still.
Are you, we have other questions that you, I'm sorry, yours answered.
Go ahead. I was just wondering. Where the ninety-six hundred figure came from? That's eight hundred dollars different than. The eighty-eight hundred that was previously. Budgeted. Like if we add up all of our stipends, it comes to eighty-eight hundred. I was just wondering where the ninety-six hundred came from.
How do you do that? All right, um.
Was that the history?
Did the chairman get an increased line?
No.
Okay, so what, what happened was we pulled the, uh. Year-to-date. But that was ninety cent.
Yeah.
Oh, you know what? There have been some additional, uh. Ease added to that in the like, um. The retirement. Stuff that you guys pay and, and there's, there were some deductions from your stipends. Or on top of your stipends.
So did that go into stipends, not? The benefits part of it?
So what we'll do is we will, uh, adjust that. To eighty-eight. But one discussion I had with Council Higgins was, uh, to carry forward. Uh, the fifty-four hundred unspent from the ordinance not passing, uh, to increase those stipends. So we can actually reduce that one. Several thousand dollars and make. The difference. And we will make those to adjust. And report that. Uh, and then at the beginning of each workshop, as per usual. You know, go over the differences between the workshop. Any other questions in the general government line? Or department?
Being none.
Um, so now we are going to. Uh, the municipal building expense. This is our order from your packet, but in order of the. Schedule that I had sent.
Page six.
Oh yeah. Page. There it is. So, um, municipal building expense, uh, we have certainly made some cutbacks here. You know, to the tune of nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars. Uh, decreasing that whole department budget to ninety-two thousand eight hundred sixty-one. Any questions? Oh my God. Um, the audit report. Uh, is looking to continue at twenty-five thousand dollars, no changes there. Federal requirement. The, uh, going into legal expenses of page nine. We are confidently reducing that by ten thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars. You know, the, the. The biggest impact to our legal budget over this last year has been the. Legal fees accrued by the. Uh, charter review committee, uh, without that work happening, it will be. Pretty well back on track to stay within these bounds. However. We'll see. The year-to-date is actually a little lower than that. When this report was pulled, it's actually close to thirty right now. But. Should we identify? A need to, uh, have more legal funding than the thirty thousand? When we do our carries forwards over the summer, we can. Grab some of that unspent fund. Now, decrease of ten thousand.
Just because, uh. I wasn't on the council last year, so I don't know how much was actually expended, uh, for this particular issue. For buildings dilapidated progress. Where we're continuing to do that more and more, you don't expect that to cause an increase?
Not nearly as impactful as the charter review committee, uh, so the two that we've. Uh, addressed so far, one. Nearing the collision, uh, those have averaged three to four thousand dollars. Between the two. So. You know, the. I really don't think that will be a huge. And like I said, we'll have. If the chances are good, we'll have something around twenty thousand dollars left over this year. You know, since the remainder was carried over last year, uh, we can continue to do that and raise.
Any other questions?
Moving on to. Administration. This is. Where you will see, uh, all of the combined telephone and internet costs. Pay no attention to that increased storm rolls there, but. You know, the combination of all of the other budgets from the past. The total line there is about thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-six. And is. Perfectly in line with, uh, what we discussed. Before, uh, uh, signing up with, with spectrum, as I say, hope. So. Very pleased with that, uh, we're looking at an increase of about the amount of that phone budget. Uh, moving the lines into there, uh, for a total administration department budget of one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars.
Is, uh, is the postage line on this, uh. Uh, increased due to? The town clerk's office decrease?
No. Uh, that is increased due to. The more mailings that we're having to do, uh. You know, we, we. You see a lot more happening with, uh, certified mail with. That, you know, the, the requirements for clean process. You know, and, and, and the cost of the mailings going up. Last year, we were, if you remember, we were under budgeted on that line and we had to. Uh, do a budget adjustment from another unspent line to cover the difference. So this. This is the expectation for this year running off.
Council of May.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, line one-one-one-two, computer support, there's an increase of seventy-four hundred dollars, is that due to new software or just increase of their fee?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, according to our contract that we renewed. Not last fall, but maybe the fall before that. Yeah. Any other questions there? Comments or cathartic remark?
No, I think you, the telephone line, you'd mentioned that's just all bundled into one. A major expense, that's where it's landing right there, yeah.
Uh, and, you know. If you. If you, you know, bring that back to what it was in FY twenty-five. Spread it all back out, uh, do the new spectrum service that we're, that we're in the process of establishing right now. Uh, the overall increase for the, uh. Total spending in phone and internet, um, townwide, or, uh, is. Still in the ballpark of about eight thousand dollars. That we discussed last fall when we started. We're still.
Moving on.
Next up. Is economic development. We. Old schedule.
Each thirteen.
I feel like that. Uh, anyways, we'll keep going. So economic development, yeah, we have, um. I am decreasing the communications contract line. I feel like that's a. Very responsible number there, uh, considering the services we are using and some of the services that we have transitioned to take care of on our own. Uh, given the need of timeliness and attention to certain projects. The economic development line. You know, I am suggesting that we bring that down to twenty thousand. Uh, there has been some. Access funding there for a couple of years that we've rolled forward. And, you know, once we start talking about carry forwards. You know, there's a. Pretty good chance we'll. Uh, bring some of that in. You know, that can certainly. Help to go towards. Deflation, we're looking at. Dangerous properties, uh. We feel pretty safe about that, uh, looking at an overall department decrease of forty-five thousand four hundred eighty dol-, uh, thirty thousand. Total department budget forty-five thousand four hundred eighty.
Oh, Higgins.
Um, Mr. Manager, the design lab contract, which line does that come out of?
Well, so. The design lab services, uh, are paid for through the communications contract line, uh, we don't actually have a contract.
I think Council Appellator was starting to.
Yeah, I, I was just curious about the Brownfield grant. Line. Why you don't have any expectations there?
Um, because it's grant funding and only one is used to, uh, pay for those services throughout the year, getting fed into that. Funding, so, uh, that's just a vessel to spend it as needed. But there's no reason to include it in the budget.
Moving on, moving on.
Uh, community mission director. This actually has. You know, pretty, pretty solid and simple budget here, um. Looking at. Uh, a minor increase of three hundred sixty-nine. Dollars overall. Uh, the department budget of one hundred two dollars. Uh, one hundred two thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars. You can see there was some offsetting happening with, you know, the office supplies, uh, there was one. Uh, substantial purchase planned for last year, uh. You know, unnecessary to keep that. Same well. But. Also see the insurance down there. Wiped out most of that. You know, so the balance of that is the. Here we go.
Moving on.
Now we're gonna go backwards. We have different versions of that. Assessing.
Page five.
Thank you. So assessing, uh, you know, is, is getting dialed back. Mainly due to, you know, FY twenty-five, uh, there was an agreement to add time for our assessor. Um, additional days, um, for specific work to be done. Uh, the difference going back to the normal schedule, uh, will decrease our budget by eighteen thousand one hundred fifty-two. Dollars, uh, not one. With. You know, several other. Decreases expected. Some of which will be carried forward, uh, with the intention to raise them again in taxes for. Certain projects that did not then get completed, then if they're not completed this year, we don't raise taxes again. The, uh, total difference is a decrease of two, twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. Those department budget is down to one hundred nineteen thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars. And. You know, as we, um. As we look at the. Developments coming. Throughout the year and, and the, uh, performance of that office and the necessity of the work in that office. You know. I think that we need to consider a very worthwhile investment. Uh, at some point, probably not this year, but you know, that would run to, uh, moving that to a fixed time. Position, you know, there are many conversations that will need to be. Addressed along the way, but, uh. That, that, you know, the, the, the workload and the time allotted to it, uh, drastically. Just to know.
Thank you, Madam Chair, how many hours does the part timer get currently?
Anyway.
Twenty-five, right? After the few extra hours, but. Time when we had a little bit more busy.
Do you guys consider full-time thirty-two and plus? Or are you talking about a salary position?
Talking about more salary. Yeah. You know, that would be a. Would take a lot to do that strategically, because, you know, there are a lot of other towns. Just something I want to make sure of. You know, the additional time this year didn't even scratch. Anybody have any questions on that?
No more questions. Move on.
Now we're gonna go to. Planning code.
Page twelve.
Alright, um, in the code department. You know, we are. Planning to add a few more hours in the week, uh. You know, that workload is increasing, uh. Plus the, you know, work related to, uh, for rental stuff that, uh, at the top there. So you'll notice that payroll line at the top. That is at the rate plus the two percent, but it is the. Well, increase in hours.
How many hours more do you think that's gonna be?
What did we work out? It's a two more hours a week. Alright, um, you know, we're.
Oh, Council of Bragden has a question.
Is, does another skin office especially asked, um. With the short term rentals, that two hours accounting for just that, or is it just?
In general.
So is that gonna be enough to believe what's going with regular rentals, because I know we talked about how expensive that was gonna be?
Well, you know, uh, if we. We get a lot more work on than we pay him for. Seriously, we are, we are incredibly lucky and should be very grateful for that, uh, relationship. He's incredibly dedicated, uh, and he's, you know, retired and he's. So. Uh, no, I would say the the direct answer is no, that's not enough time, but that is what's in the budget.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we didn't have Tom through that line, it definitely be sixty. So total, oh, and we have additional, uh, training and travel in there this year, uh. For, uh, additional, uh, trainings and licenses that, uh, Tom needs. Plus, we are going to be. Very strongly encouraging members of the planning board to attend more trainings, uh, and educational. Experiences, so we are hoping that that count. Uh, total difference increase two thousand three hundred eighty eight dollars. Total department budget forty eight thousand four hundred sixty three.
Move on.
Onward to. The big end, alright. Uh, so the remainder of the night's workshop will be on. Working on it, thank you. The Public Works Department, uh, it's broken down into several individual departments, um. We will start with department zero four zero two, Public Work Administration. Um, this, you know, with the, with the pluses and minuses over there. Uh, overall differences, a decrease in that budget of one thousand forty five dollars. Uh, total department budget one hundred twenty four thousand nine hundred three dollars.
Is the director's salary, uh. Stipulated by your contract or what?
It's an individual agreement, that's one of the, uh, few that I mentioned in my overview.
Uh, Council McGowan.
Yeah, could you elaborate on that? Why, why his salary is more than the two percent that others are getting?
I can, uh. You know, the, the, the council should not necessarily be.
Position.
Diving into that realm of of performance and and, uh, salary.
I only ask because. Last year, the understanding was we gave these bigger raises to people with the understanding that it would be two to three percent going forward. That's why I'm asking.
That's correct, and and, uh, that is absolutely what was said and agreed upon. Uh, however, there are, uh, several, as I mentioned in the overview, uh, within our entire team. Uh, whose performance and workload and. You know, necessity to the overall operation, uh, has really grown. And, you know, there we together decided that, uh, their current takes were. Lower than they should.
Council of May.
Individually, I, I can't get it.
No, I, I do it. Thank you. That's what I mean.
Thank you. I'll try to be helpful with this question. Would you consider this more of a performance increase, uh, that you're. That you're giving rather than all inclusive cola?
Um, for the. For the six. People that got individual merit increased.
Which is well within your purview to do.
Exactly, uh, those are. Based on. Really three things, workloads increasing over time, the performance. And and and, uh. You know, uh, at the, the level of performance they have have shown in those departments. Uh, in leadership role and then like the critical necessity of them on our team. I mean, it's a three, three-legged story.
Council Higgins?
Yes. Mr. Manager, was this one of the. Positions that was playing catch up last year?
Um, yeah.
And that's why it was such a big jump?
Yeah.
And then doing another big jump this year?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Council McGowan.
I ju- I just wanted to clarify, this certainly isn't about. Any one person or anybody's job performance, I just wanted the question answered because we are gonna get questions. From the public, because we got a lot of flack last year. For those raises and the promise was, so when people ask me these questions, I have to be able to give an answer for that.
Sure, and and that answers.
It doesn't, it's not that I don't think people don't. Workloads have any, I get all of that, so I just don't want people to think this is a personal thing, it certainly is not.
I understand that, um, however, the appropriate response would. Or an, an option that you can choose as an appropriate response would be, you know, council has. Uh, you know, really doesn't, uh. Have interplay within the, uh, municipal galleries added that review of manager. Uh, you're more than welcome to contact and to have those discussions, however, uh. Personnel, uh, items are entirely confidential, so. You know, I can give basically the same answer I gave tonight in very general terms, but it's. Really not a conversation for.
Move on.
Moving forward. That brings us to. Public Works Garage Maintenance, that's zero four zero three. We, we are actually decreasing that one by two thousand dollars. Uh, based on, uh, expectations for. Heating fuel. Up there and it's going to be, uh, missing the doors and the decrease in use of your pot on, um. So that brings that total down to thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. This is the one, alright, Public Works Roads and Construction, um. This is where you'll see, uh, a union pay, um. The crew members and their, uh, pays reflected, uh, you'll see. The, um. You know, different materials that are used there, uh, supplies, tools, the gas, oil, uh. And most importantly, uh, the paving budget. So together with Brian, we have. Put a lot of thought into this and believe that it's the most responsible thing to. Put that at three hundred thousand dollars year, this year, that is two hundred thousand dollar decrease. Um, yes, Matt, we do have a presentation for you, we'll get there in a moment, uh.
Thank you.
Was that for revision, uh? So, you know, when we're, when we're talking about the increasing cost of paving, the actual. Condition of our roads in general and the spots that are of. Major concern and deterioration, uh. You know, what, uh, Brian has come up with with a list of suggestions with. What I've kind of verified as I drove through town, uh, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little more in depth with him in a moment. The three hundred thousand dollars is even a little bit more than what we feel needs to be done, uh. So. How about I give my total suggestion for that department? And then we'll, uh, talk more about the individual, uh, paving plan and we have the. Little presentation we can give you for that.
Yes.
Uh, looking at, you know, once all is said and done. Alright, um, once all is said and done, the department, uh, is. Increasing by eighty five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Uh, the new total is down to one million four hundred twenty seven thousand six hundred sixty six. So. Um. Brian, do you want me to run through that, or would you like to give as well? Alright. He's not exactly a grab the mic and sing karaoke kind of guy. So, let me change to. This here. Oh, PowerPoint. Oops. So, uh, this was a presentation that, that Ryan, uh, put together. Share with y'all this evening about paving in general. These suggestions are made in order of priority deemed by him, uh, the. With the assistance of me. Milling, shimming and overlay projects will all plan to be done by the paving contractor. Uh, the smaller spots, uh. Would be done by the Public Works Department, um, and material is available some months. Uh, and then there will be some other utility repair paving, um, by the, uh, Public Works Crew. And, uh, there's some, uh, necessary storm base and repair. Uh, that would be done by them as well, that is, uh, not detailed in this yet. Uh, have you ever wondered where potholes come from? Uh, so this is an interesting, I didn't know, I learned this today, but. Presentation, so, uh, see, what happens first is the, the moisture from the rain and then melting. You know, snow and all that, uh, seeps through the asphalt over time. Uh, goes through the sub base gravel and into the native soil. Uh, when the temperatures drop and freeze, the, uh, native soil underneath. Uh, expands upward with the, the expansion of the water freezing like ice. Oh, that's frozen water, of course, and then it, it, it pushes up the sub base. Uh, and, you know, then it pushes up. The, uh, asphalt and, and the asphalt is not a material that expands, so that's when that, uh, cracks. Uh, but when the temperature increases, um. The, the, the asphalt stays where it was and cracked, uh, but the. Uh, the, the surfaces underneath are now weakened and, and, uh, pitted underneath, so. Soon as the tire goes over it, uh, that pops that bubble and becomes a. A puddle and the remaining pieces get, you know, thrown aside by the upcoming traffic. So, that is something we deal with on here. And, you know, we can throw whole batch at potholes all day, every day. And, you know, because of the change in the, uh, adhesives that. Or the binding agents that have been, uh, in use over the years. Uh, you know, two hours later you go back and that pothole is empty again, so. Some of these things are, you know, definitely based around. Ongoing damage from pot. Uh, so Midway Road Rice Farm, uh, this is something that we've been addressing. In sizable chunks for a few years now, uh. Within this year's paving plan, uh, we would expect to complete that road. So that the entirety of it is all within, uh, just a few years of the lifespan. And we don't get into the situation that we were in prior to starting to repaving of. So that'll be done, it'll be another. Fifteen, twenty years? Oh, certainly, but. You know, before we really have to start worrying about it. Uh, there's one point four miles left to go to complete that stretch, uh, and it is in. Pretty rough shape, uh, so it would certainly be beneficial to complete that and then have the entirety of that. Uh, done, uh, and not have to worry about it for another fifteen plus years.
Question.
Council Higgins?
Much heavy haul is on that road? How much heavy hauling is done on that road?
We also, you know, have to consider that, uh, there's quite a few lots. Out there that have hit the market and are now, uh, their new owners are now working. Uh, with Tom and Code Office in preparation for building in that area. Uh, so I would imagine that that heavier traffic will increase as though. That heavier traffic will increase as the project uh come to life. Right now, I'd say it's probably, you know, uh, you know, our our trash trailer goes through there, so.
So I have a question, so this is part of the the top priority for the three hundred thousand that's in our budget?
Yeah.
How much will that come?
We'll get there when I go to the spreadsheet. Alright, um. So, we all love this area. Down Bowden Street Hill and you and you turn on to Putnam Scott Avenue and you get bucked all around. Uh, that is in horrible shape, uh this is what deteriorating asphalt looks like coupled with. Uh, road widening over the years, uh the 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 hill on the side uh deteriorating and. Over the years, that's that's, you know, grown and moved so much that the storm basin is now located out in the middle of the road. Uh, and needs to be moved, so uh we will be planning to address. That stretch for paving and relocating that storm basin to get it off onto the side, uh so. Not only functional, but but is less of a an obstacle. The next slide is this stretch of road. Uh, from the Katahdin General to Station Road. This one is. Something that Brian and I went back and forth on and talked about, talked about and, you know. It is, it is included in the Phase Two of the. Uh, Municipal Partnership Initiative that we have with DOT. Phase One, which is supposed to start construction within the next year. And be completed before the end of twenty seven, uh is from Katahdin Avenue to the underpass. And then Phase Two, which is supposed to start immediately after, goes from the underpass to the town line. The extent of which that. Uh, project. Uh, would be is is uh unknown, still whether it would be just a repaving or a reconstruction. We know that we need no infrastructure changes over there, so we're kind of handing that over to the DOT to. Make their decision, uh but knowing that. The it likely wouldn't start until two thousand twenty eight. We feel that it will be worth our while uh to bite the bullet and. Uh, pave this stretch because it is in horrendous shape. A very highly trafficked road and local visitors alike. It would be a small impact to the overall paving budget, but I think it would be a huge impact. Uh, to drive this and and the jeopardy of. Uh. Going to number six here, Midway Road between uh High Street and East Ave. Um, has excessive water intrusion. The road surface had failed, uh this is gonna be one of those. Projects that requires milling, shimming and paving. But we would plan to bring that back to life. Uh, Knock Street from Poplar to Spruce. Um, this is one of those situations where. You know, it it's fairly flat, but you can see that. Uh, the water penetration and all that has deteriorated and, you know, created. Seriously small piece of that that really uh is is even worse than when you see, you know, bumps and curves from frost heaved. Um, that this, you know, once it gets here, uh if not addressed quickly, that get. You know, that compounds in speed of how fast it deteriorates. We're planning on fixing that area. Uh, Rhode Island approached New Jersey, uh a lot of the same issues here. Pretty serious deterioration there. And need for, need for uh repaving and reshaping there. This is a stretch that's up for consideration. I'm getting too lucky, it's kind of hard on the. I mean.
Has been for years.
I know. Uh, well, maybe once both of you are off the council, it'll be an easier decision to make. Uh, so Somerset Street from Oak to Elm is is pretty rough. Um, and we're looking to do, you know, not a complete rebuild and and all that, but. Uh, the the smaller jobs that the. Public Works Crew does with the the holes and the uh pavement and the roller that we got on a few years ago and all that. Uh, they'll be making that a better. The hope. So, that concludes that presentation. And then we can move to the spreadsheet, which shows exactly what we want to do.
So, not, none of those photos show sidewalks or anything that need to be repaved, is that not included anywhere in this presentation or budget?
There's not enough money in the world to allow us to repair sidewalks.
That's concerning on many reasons, um. I guess I I want to see the breakdown before I think it work on easy.
Yeah, so so sidewalk, um. Repairs, I I don't, at one point I knew a figure around the difference in cost. But it's substantially more expensive than paving roads.
Think you had that last year, you had that number last year.
I did, maybe you know.
I'm sorry, did you say?
I think they had that number last year, if I remember right, because it was brought up with some people wanting. Some of the sidewalks repaired and.
The true.
For time, it's.
Right, because you get a. And the curving is. Slip from. And then, and you know, on top of that, when we when we. When we're able to dive into sidewalks, uh we also have to re-engineer them with. Uh, ADA requirements and tech complaints, which. Uh, hey, I get a whole four, you know, my little brother wrapped up in the middle of the road half the time, uh. You know, Louie can tell you firsthand, uh sidewalks are not friendly to whoever. Who have mobility limitations in town, uh but it's just not something we can tackle anytime soon, really, unless. Somebody wants to make a major donation.
Council Bragdon, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the point, I I've heard a lot of complaints a- about the roads, let alone sidewalks. And I think the sidewalks personally are just as important as the roads, I I know a gentleman that. Asked to drive his wheelchair on the side of the road to get to my store three times a week. And I think that's a feeling unfortunate. Um, so I hate to see that it's being excluded, because I I even think doing little bits at a time is better than doing nothing at all. Uh, again, personal opinion, uh one of the discussions we had. Last year that I was on the council was making Millenocket more appealing to people walking bicycles. X Y Z, X Y Z, um and it just feels like that vision has got stomped out over the last year. I get it costs a lot of money, I just personally feel like it's not something we should exclude.
Council Higgins.
Yes, thank you, manager. What's the potential for grants for sidewalks? Has has anyone ever explored that? I see what the handada. Well. Funny you ask, there there was a lot of funding expected to be coming out. To allow us to do that sort of stuff from the federal government, but. That is all going bye bye with the current administration, so. Don't believe we'll have access to funding uh to that extent to do it. Uh, and, you know, it's it's disheartening to hear. That there's, um, you know, an impression that. Uh, we're stopping out the need for. Accessibility and and increase for for uh mobility limitation and and all that sort of stuff. What needs to be understood is. The excessive cost and the amount of money that we have to work with. It it's it's, it's on the front of everyone's mind all the time, but it's impossible.
I'm personally afraid hearing that that, yes, again, I get it costs a lot of money, but. At what point do we say enough's enough and start actually working on this project, it's gonna be expensive. Every single year that we look at it, I mean, if it's going to be more expensive than roads on a continuous basis, then. That's how it's basically always gonna be, I'm just worried that. We're not looking at that demographic of Millenocket and considering the options for for that particular area, I would like this. Let me rephrase that, uh or ask a different question, how much money? Does it take to typically do a section at a time? A smaller section like the one that they did beside the old high school? Uh, how much money would like fifty thousand dollars get us? Last year's price, okay, and have prices gone up or down since last year?
Nearly ten dollars a ton.
Is is that up or up ten?
That's up.
Okay, thank you.
Gone up significantly.
And that's projected to be the same this summer.
Yeah, that's the expected price for this summer.
Okay.
We have, we have the asphalt plan over in East Two, correct? So it wouldn't have to come all the way into Bangor.
No, thank you.
Yeah. So let's bring it back to, I think as a council, we do need to have the discussion about the sidewalk and the accessibility, that is something. I understand it, you know, it hasn't been put to the side. It it's still on all of our radars, but due to cost, we've had to prioritize. But I think as a community, we still want to have that age-friendly community, the accessibility, I don't think that vision has gone away, it's just the path to get there. Is gonna be a little bit more difficult and we need to lay that out and figure that out and put that in a plan, so um. Encourage you to go ahead with uh. Your presentation.
Yeah, before I uh.
The numbers.
Before I uh get into more detail there, just two general things in response to Council Bragg's. Comment there, um, one of them is. You know, where. You know, where it was stated that that was a personal opinion. You know, the concern that I have is that those become, those become close, those become. Uh, you know, including articles, those become cheered around and and uh in no way would I ever. Expect or or want um the message that the. Millenocket Town Government or Administration are in any way. Not in favor of doing that. Uh, it's entirely uh based on. Buying. We just can't do. We want to do it, we just. Uh, on top of that. You know, uh you mentioned it. A need for future funding or or a plan for doing that, um as we progress with. Say, uh the new biofuel company, um. And and others down the fight, you know, this one is very, very, very close. Uh, that in return allows the town to create a. Which, uh, that funding is. You know, there are, there is a list of things, those are, uh, those funds are allowed to be spent on. Um, and that, that the, you know, top of that list is paving, road, sidewalk. Uh, infrastructure improvements that are related to accessibility to that. Site, so as that fund is fed and then compounded and grown. Uh, that is where we would get that additional paving fund, we may be able to. In years to come. Uh, moving into the paving suggestions. Uh, so this is a list plus the measurements. Uh, at uh inch and three quarters thickness and the total cost for that section of street. You know, so we start with Midway Road, uh. You know, I have the dimensions, uh and the cost, the uh. You know, the other smaller section of it, Bowden Street Hill, uh. It has all the listed areas, uh their measurements, their costs and the total proposal for this year. That two hundred ninety three thousand eight hundred ninety five. Beyond. That, uh, you know, depending on where those go and where the price. Lands on the day that the service is made, uh. You know, sometimes we have to change direction, sometimes we have a little more wiggle room, um. Yeah, further down is is considerations for anything beyond that. So we have, you know, Highland Avenue needs to be addressed, uh. We still have that, uh. Katahdin Ave sidewalk in here that we've been uh interested in doing for a couple of years now. The. You know, even further, Wausau Winter Street. So this is a breakdown, I should, I can actually send this an email to this guy, he can take a.
That's please.
Look at it. Total proposal there, two hundred ninety three thousand eight hundred ninety five. Speaking to the budget line of three hundred thousand.
Council Higgins?
Yes, so the Rice Farm Midway Road. That total cost is almost two hundred and thirty thousand?
That's correct.
How many houses are out there? Right now?
Houses?
Yeah.
Very few.
A few.
It's also a very highly trafficked and important road.
Council today.
You know, having it all done around the same timeframe strategically. Um, is is much better. It's all done, set aside and then focused.
And and I under- I understand that, but.
Okay.
Then you've got all the other residents on some of these roads that need to be repaired. That are paying taxes too.
Correct.
Council Jermaine.
Uh, good question, uh the future, the future of the Rice Farm Road, develop a lot, develop a, so in this. Uh, statement is gonna be kind of a couple of questions. How many developable lots are going to be along that road, I assume that these are gonna be. Um, more wealthy housing projects. More or less like the new development then was Morgan Lane area where it's high-end. Uh, residential houses, is that what the future of? The Rice Farm Road is going, did I see Jeff Nod? Nod Noda.
I, could you? That's, that's my impression, I don't know exactly how many lots have sold, there were.
How many are possibly to be out there?
Probably twenty listed. What's that?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty lots.
Uh, yeah, I'd say they're expected to be obviously new construction, but probably higher-end homes.
So a lot of new construction will be traveling up and down that road assumably, um, doing, doing work on those future sale properties.
Yeah, and there's a number of those.
What's the likelihood of damage due to the, that equipment on that road? I understand the investment of, of, of the Rice Farm Road to make it more attractive, um, to sell lots, making high-end, higher-end living, bringing a lot of tax revenue, I understand that portion. I just am trying to avoid build the road and then the road get ruined in the next five years with heavy.
Well, I mean, you know, when you put that additional heavy traffic onto a road in this condition, uh, it goes from needing to be repaved to being completely reconstructed. And, you know, that's what we're doing on, that's what we're looking to do on Bates Street, Phase One. Uh, our local cost on that after the split with DOT is one point nine million dollars, the DOT is putting in nearly a million, so you know, to do it now as repaving or to do it when it gets to a point, you know, for, for two hundred and thirty thousand or to hold off until it's a complete reconstruction project, we could be looking at a different, a different, you know, billion.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have wastewater that far out?
No.
So that one, if we did go up that far, that would have to be get to our input into.
Yeah, no.
Oh, no, it wouldn't have to be put in.
It's all long walk.
Those are all larger lots, so it's one of the, well, that's.
Yeah.
Move on, there were the questions?
Oh, that's, that's it, we're done. Uh, that is the end of the paving informational session. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that? Final uh, you know, number on the, the, oh, you know what, we're not done.
You have done transfer site of cemetery.
Cemetery.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do that.
Which thirty-five is transfer cemetery. Excuse me, let's, do you have questions on?
I had one question on that.
Okay.
Just on the payroll, was that an add, was there an added position added to that?
Yeah, so there's, uh, yeah, that, that includes of one additional crew member.
Okay.
Uh, you know, eighty, seventy-five to eighty percent of which is paid for by the wastewater uh, flusher truck budget, uh, so the actual impact on our budget is you know, twelve, twenty thousand dollars for really eighty thousand perish package.
I, I just wanted to make sure that was included because you had said previously we were gonna add.
Uh, back to the expense budget?
Everybody else ready to move on to the next?
Oh.
Transfer site?
Bear with me a moment.
Sure.
Um, transfer site, so in the transfer site, we have, uh, you know, we've dialed back as much as we possibly could here. Uh, and then, you know, that gets stewed up by the landfill's cost, uh, that everybody will, you know, disposal fees, you know, for the way you look at the wood ash disposal line, uh, that has to be up over eight thousand dollars just to keep up with our normal amount over there. Uh, the total budget um, is increased by five thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars for total of five hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred five dollars. I would like to say that, uh, should we be encouraging our friends and neighbors to participate in uh, using the recycling facility over there? Uh, we can take a large amount of material from going in the hopper to being recycled, uh, if happens on a daily basis, you know, seemingly no matter what we try to do for reinforcement over there, uh, so far, uh, has not worked, but we can stop spending money disposing of those items and we can make money from recycling those items. Uh, and that would certainly help to decrease or offset the cost of operating.
Sure, on recycling. Have we ever looked at, and I know this gets, I'm getting off a little bit, but doing the collection as the town, to do it, they get, when you're looking at how much we could be getting back versus putting out to pick, do the pickups for the recycling.
Well, you know, actually Counselor Dumeay and I had a discussion about that when, or several, you know, had great length about what that would look like when he was the council chairman, you know. Uh, there are opportunities there, um, to do both trash and recycling pickup, uh, you know, we, we were aware, I don't know what the current status is, but, uh, um, a certain business that had wrote to me about interest to sell their business and their equipment. Which potentially go towards that, there would be operating cost and you know, personnel costs and that sort of thing, I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure if it would offset it, it may run at a definite, but, uh, you know, we didn't get that detailed into the uh, into the work at that time, but something we can work.
Thinking about revenue.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
No other questions?
No, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one way to get the town, get involved and jump on board with it. Because I, yes, you're right, there's a lot of those recycled materials that do grow great in the hopper. And then we have to pay all that tonnage to get it hauled out.
And I, and I had been the guy that stands at the hopper and said it, I don't know how many people in a row, hey, you know, that, uh, you know, could you bring that down to the uh, recycling plant, we can actually recycle that now, and instead of spending money on it, we can make money on it, it saves you some money on your taxes. You know, I, I was called all kinds of creative and, uh, helpful vibes and that sort of thing by our, our community members, so, uh, it's, it's a tough argument to make, but I certainly hope that we can continue to encourage people to use it more so we can spend.
Counselor Jemay?
Thank you, this is just a comment from here, how many times did you have to climb out after people tossed you in?
Uh, I never got tossed in.
There we go, that takes us to the cemetery committee, no, budget, right? Committee budget, moving right along.
Do you have posters for, uh, recycling inside the tran, uh, dumpster there?
Sure do.
Yeah, because I know you added, uh, other items that they can recycle now.
Yes.
What did Counselor post here just say?
Posters, yeah.
Found a poster.
Yeah, the compactor section there.
There's also a great display next to the hopper with samples of everything that should not go into it, but into the uh, recycling facility, and they, they just throw it in it. So, cemetery, uh, overall pretty minor increase here, it's reflective of, uh, you know, the pay and, and we have some needs, uh, to continue addressing the fertilizer and seed up there as we uh, continue to prepare the health of grass and soil with, uh, increase of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars, total department budget seventy-nine thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Any questions?
No, I'm not, I just got a comment after he's all done.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think we're done.
Okay, I guess, I gotta say, you have really dug deep, I mean, you're looking at some of these, I mean, dollar differences and three, thirty-four dollars and you were digging, so I guess I wanna say thank you.
You're welcome. I give it a lot of advice.
Thank you.
Wonderful treasure, she, she does keep me in line and encouraged. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, we knew that we were looking at stuff that was out of our control and and, and, you know, we went into it without knowing some of those numbers, we went into this process thinking about, uh, you know, our responsibility as the administration towards, uh, you know, unnecessary taxation, uh, you know, should, you know, there, there are it's a pretty common theme, not just here, but to say, well, we might do that, or we might need that, we don't know if it's gonna happen, we'll budget for it, um, that is not necessarily the intention of what you raise in Texas, but what you uh, collect and invest over the years, uh, from uh, your cash flow balance and your rainy day fund, if you will, for emergencies and that sort of thing. Uh, so we're, we're trying to get as realistic at, uh, of a spending budget so that we do not overtax it in excess of what is needed critical for, uh, the operations and services.
Counselor Jemay?
Yeah, I'll make a real brief thank you, uh, I, I through Counselor Higgins' comments, um, about your budgeting on this, last year you did, in my impression, a great job entirely on your staff, um, again, this year at first, at the first, at the first meeting tonight, um, as well, it looks pretty good, and I also want to compliment you, because you also leave wiggle room in there for the council, I think in your words, I've heard you say this before, where you budget conservatively and leave us the ability to be the heroes and the villains, which is, which is appreciated, because some of these are tough choices, they're very tough choices. Especially when you're, you're talking about cutting things that are very important to people, um, and can impact people greatly. Um, going forward, it's, it's really conflict to, um, I'm sure for, for a bunch of us, to look at cutting these things, um, which, which I'm willing to consider, and like Counselor Higgins just said, uh, we have some things to think about, uh, just as long as we don't cut from one area uh, with, with the expectations and, and try not to just raise them on others, um, trying to, try to be practical and, and responsible, like you said before, so I just wanna compliment you on this first draft, thank you.
How much did you sandbag?
What's that?
How much have you sandbagged?
Oh. I don't even know, we can figure that out and have that number at, uh, the. Put it in my own.
Any other council comment? Yeah, great, no, I would just echo the other counselors, thank you, um, for all the hard work and thank you, Bev, for sure. For all the time and effort you put in this. We will have two more, uh, budget workshops going forward, and the next one will be during our regular council meeting, uh, next Thursday, so we'll do this all again.
Sixty-six percent of this budget.
I know, right?
I'm very excited.
So, this concludes the budget, our budget workshop, we are adjourned at seven eighteen.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.